Board members, if we can get you to take your seats, we'll get started. And it feels weird starting an hour later than the normal, but maybe this will be the new norm. I want to welcome everyone to our second day of our board meetings. For those of you, this is your first one here. Our emergency exits are these doors that, to my right, if you're looking at me, to the left, hit the hallway, right or left, and then you're out of the building. Restrooms are right across the hall. I thought I saw him around here. We want to welcome the Highway Patrol. They come and help with our security and that, so they're here providing a good service for us. So we'll get started. First item is a board member message. We usually have that on Thursday, but board member Mark Marsh had a family thing he had to deal with, and so we're going to get his, have his message today. So, oop, there it is, wrong mouse, there we go. Board member Marsh.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Huntsman. As I thought about something I might share with you that is a part of what we do and what I think is important, something that I wanted to highlight today was our technology colleges and the opportunities that they're affording our students in high school to get a certificate that can put them into the workforce quickly, and that they can not only be a career pathway, but they can also be a stepping stone to higher education also. Having had a son go through this type of a program and get his way into his career, I want to talk about that maybe a little later, but some of the things that we have here, that they offer, offers students an opportunity to get a certificate in your healthcare information technologies, trades, and services. Having served on the MTEC board for a number of years, it was interesting to see how many students had gone through there and coming out of high school actually left high school with a certificate and could work at a real job while they were going through higher education or go into a career and started to better themselves and maybe move up to higher education later. What brought this to my attention was I work for The Home Depot in Park City, and I have contractors come to the contractor's desk every day doing business with us, and as I did that, I have so many contractors looking for somebody to go to work. They don't want to hire a warm body, they want to hire somebody that is educated, that are either that or has some experience, and they want them ready to go to work. We have to look at that as we look through our educational system as one of our customers that we serve here as a board. Our customers mainly are students, trying to get them the best education we can, but also we should be serving our customers who is the business side, who partner with us, who are willing to work with us on a day-to-day basis to help get people educated and get them into the workforce. I have a fellow that runs a plumbing company right now. He will, he is looking for CTE graduates, he is looking for someone who has possibly a little bit of experience but hasn't done much. He is willing to allow them to pay for their first semester quarter, whatever, of schooling, and then he will start back paying it as they continue through, and he will pay for their education. So as they go through this and they get a certificate through the tech colleges, they have hands-on experience, so they've worked with the stuff, his pipes and plumbing that he wants and he needs, but he's begging for help. There's many companies like that. I have electricians that are doing the same thing, just trying to get someone into the workforce. A young man that I knew of applied for one of their jobs, they've put him through school there, and now he's decided to move up in the electrical world, and they are paying for his higher education, and he's going to school while he works for them and provides a living for his young family. I think that's interesting. I have a son who went into nursing, and I want to talk a little bit about his pathway there. He started with the MTEC and got a degree as a CNA. He wanted to become a nurse, but he couldn't get into college because he didn't have the right classes, the right experience to get into the program he wanted to be, so he took the CTE class, classes, got into there, and got his certificate as a CNA. With that, he had, number one, the experience they were looking for, and number two, he had a certificate which bumped him up into there. He went on to school, he's gotten a four-year degree with a business administration certificate on top of it through four-year colleges. He attended almost everyone in the state, but at the same time, he got out of there. He got, he has a degree at that, and at age 31, he is the director for a home health care and hospice company. Just because I felt that that little boost that the CTE gave him at first and the experience, and he was able to work as a CNA while he was going to school and provide for his family alongside, which made it so that his wife didn't have to work and could stay home with their young son. I think that the things we have to look at in there, I wanted to spotlight MTEC just because it gives you a chance to look at what impact it has, and the MTEC serves 4,500 students right now, and that's basically, they're based out of Lehigh, they're at Thanksgiving Point is their main campus, they built a new one there while I was serving on the board. They serve seven school districts, 27 high schools, and 31 charter schools in that area where kids are going and getting an education in high school, and most of them are graduating with a certificate when they leave there that puts them able to either work and put theirself through school or go to work, and they're certified and can move up through apprenticeships and go into higher education to get more. They have the secondary students in their membership hours up there, the secondary students in high schools make up 46% of their student body, so people that are learning trades such as welding, plumbing, electrical, culinary arts, whatever, make that a great thing to do. And the increase that they've had over the last year, just in the last year, has been almost a 5% growth of people wanting to get a better education, and that's something that we worked on. The governors talked about getting people, you know, career-ready, college or career-ready, and that includes your technical colleges, either getting a certificate or a degree of some type. The, I wanted to go in there, one thing that was very good for my son and for many others that do it, 99.5% of the students who graduate, they graduate debt-free, no student loans, because they're either earning enough money to pay for their tuition, they're getting scholarships which are offered, or they are also being paid by their employers that are willing to hire them on and let them go to school and pay for their schooling. Imagine what that would be like if someone that was trying to be a doctor could do that same thing without the hundreds of thousands of dollars that they put into schooling and their living expenses. 79% of the students who are in the tech system right now graduate each year with a certificate. 20% of them are in the progress of getting theirs that are there. They also offer, you know, apprenticeships through companies that work and help facilitate students in apprenticeships right now. MTEC has 785 students in apprenticeships, and I think they could have more because there are companies that are looking for people to hire. As we go through and look at that, MTEC is also hooked in with UVU, and they have a pathway that's already created so that they can go through and make it happen to move right on into UVU's programs, and they facilitate that and help them move right on through the system so that they can, don't find a roadblock or can't figure out how to get involved, they help that. And they also have a 98% placement of students who leave the tech colleges right now who find employment. Sometimes that's the toughest part for people that have a degree, and they get into a field that's maybe not as popular, not as busy, and they have a hard time finding someplace to work, but technical colleges can facilitate that. I have an example here, a four-year dental student at Midwest University named Austin went to MTEC down there, he took the dental assisting program and got a, during his senior year in high school, got his certificate. He worked as a dental assistant while receiving his bachelor's degree at UVU, and then that gave him seven years of dental experience before he started his classwork into dental school to become a full-fledged dentist, and so he's able to do that. And another example of a student that was there named Alyssa, she received an associate's degree from UVU in engineering design technology, and she's currently applying for internships, and she, her comment was that they want technical experience, and I have done everything else, but I, but now it's too late to try to get that experience before she got there. Solution that MTEC could have done for her, they could have placed her in the MTEC program pre-engineering courses, and hers, believe it or not, was in welding. She'll probably be the star of the next Flashdance because she's a welder. She could have earned a certificate that was related to her field, and then she could have been working in that field while receiving her associate's degree at UVU because she would have been taken down that pathway and right on into school. I think that our work that we do here as a board, as we work with technical colleges and we try to make good decisions for the places where it affects our high school students and the support and the working relationship we have, makes it important for us to always remember that as we are visiting people in our area, and that, that we also take advantage to go visit the technical college in your area and see what it is that they do. My favorite thing at board meetings was to go to the culinary arts department. I have a love for cooking and doing things like that, and it was fun. We worked trying to get a satellite campus in the Park City School District between the North Summit, South Summit, and Park City School Districts as we served on that MTA, MCAT board at the time, it's the MTEC now, to have that pilot campus up there, and they were willing, Deer Valley and some of these world-class restaurants were willing to donate and pay their chefs to come and be the instructors for that campus so that they could get people into their place of employment that had experience, that knew what they were doing. And so I think we have to look at opportunities and help and push and do what we can and just encourage all of you to get out and visit your technical colleges in your area. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mark. We have some changes on our agenda. I think it's safe to recognize Lorraine Thorpe, are you, you're?
Loriann.
Oh, Loriann, where did I get, I've got you on my brain. Loriann, sorry. Loriann, Loriann here, the government, as you know, we have a vacancy. Board member Hanson moved and created this vacancy, and the governor, there's a process to fill it, and the governor's been working that process, and Loriann applied, and right now it's in the Senate process. Right now, we were hoping that would be completed by today, and it isn't, so we want to welcome you to our, I guess you're not a board, we haven't sworn you in or anything yet, we've got to finish that Senate process, but we want to welcome you to our meetings. Get lost, just ask somebody and they'll get you where you, we know you're very familiar with this building, and just wanted to recognize you as all the board members did and other people, who you are, and hopefully everything works out pretty smoothly quickly, so would like to fill that seat. So, welcome. Thank you. Okay, some other changes, but not to our agenda. We're required to have our annual training on our Open Public Meeting Act. Both of our, and it's kind of odd that it happens, but both of our AAGs are unable to give us this training today for medical and health reasons, both kind of different things not related, but we are fortunate enough to have Jeff Van Holton, our policy advisor, will be giving us that training, so we'll invite you up, and we have a PowerPoint, don't Appreciate you taking this on. What's a short?
Very short notice, yes. Jeff Van Holton, policy advisor. I was asked about an hour ago if I could do this for you all, and I was just handed the PowerPoint. Luckily, it has talking points in it.
Yeah. There's, there's.
Yeah, feel free.
And then we can correct, we can correct board member Lyra if she's wrong.
Absolutely.
Several people have had a lot of this training in the past through USBA and other organizations, but it is important for us to have it and be reminded and refreshed of what that looks like, so we welcome, welcome you.
Thank you.
So are you wanting to get through the presentation and then take questions, or do you just want to take questions along the way? What flavor do you want?
That's an interesting question about questions. I am not going to sugarcoat the idea that I am some type of expert on the Open and Public Meetings Act. I'm familiar with it, enough that I feel like I can go through some talking points. I might be more comfortable writing down your questions and sending you email responses later, once I've conferred notes.
Okay, very good.
If that works for everyone else.
All right, thank you for addressing that. So, please continue.
Yes, welcome to your Open and Public Meetings Act training, everyone. So the philosophy and purpose, and I am going to just forewarn you now, because of lack of ability to prepare, I'm going to be breaking my presentation rule where I will be reading a lot to you. I try usually to keep it more conversational, but for the sake of getting through the training and making sure that we get the right information, I will not ad lib too much. So the philosophy and purpose of the Open and Public Meetings Act, you are a board, and you exist to aid in the conduct of the people's business and should conduct deliberations and take actions openly. A meeting, including a workshop or an executive session in which a quorum is present, must be open to the public. We will discuss a little bit more the definitions of meeting. You may or may not be surprised by what is and is not. Just keep in mind, a quorum, if they're present, it has to be open to the public unless it fits within the legal exemptions that are in code. So, some basic principles, oh, and I am even unfamiliar with how the slides will lay out before you as I keep hitting the button, so this is a fun discovery together. So we'll start with a public body. So I'm going to go through public body, quorum, and meeting, and I'm going to let you know what the definitions are. So a public body in statute means any administrative, advisory, executive, or legislative body of the state or its political subdivisions, which would include school districts, that is created by the Utah Constitution, statute, rule, ordinance, or resolution, consists of two or more persons, expends, disperses, or is supported in whole or in part by tax revenue, and is vested with the authority to make decisions regarding the public's business. So I would dare say that is definitely you. You fit within this squarely. One thing that I have noticed in my time in the public sector is creation of things via resolution can get a little tricky. That's something you may all want to consider, that some of the advisory groups that you create and whatnot, there's been conversation in the past of whether or not that's created by a resolution through your policies. Believe we have settled on it is not, there are some technicalities there, but we do have to be careful on how we create things, because if it does trigger that resolution piece, you might have a group that is actually subject to the Open and Public Meetings Act. What is a quorum? It is a simple majority. Hopefully, that one is the easiest definition for you all. And what is a meeting? My favorite part about the law is definitions are never exactly what you think they are. So I'll let you know right now what a meeting is according to statute. So in code, it says, "A meeting means the convening of a public body," which you fall into that definition, "with a quorum present, including a workshop or an executive session, whether in person or by means of electronic communications," we'll visit that later, "or the purpose of discussing, receiving comments from the public about, or acting upon a matter over which the public body has jurisdiction or advisory power." Here is what a meeting is not, which is just as important. "A chance gathering or social gathering," which I would hope you are all doing on the regular with each other. "A meeting does not mean the convening of a public body that has both legislative and executive responsibilities. If no public funds are appropriated for expenditure during the time of the public body is convened, and the public body is convened solely for the discussion or implementation of administrative or operational matters, for which nor formal action by the public body is required, and that would not come before the public body for discussion or action in a normal setting." Feeling good so far about, we're wrapped, okay? I'm doing all right, Carol?
Wow.
Sure, sure. So let's talk about the process really fast. You need to make the public aware of what you are doing, and that would include the following, the date and the time, the location, the agenda, and you also need to establish the rules of order that you're going to conduct these meetings in, and you need to set and follow your bylaws. So it's always important to review your board bylaws and make sure you're following those part of your requirement under the Open and Public Meetings Act. You're required to notice your meeting at least 24 hours ahead of time, and the agenda has to be reasonably specific. That is a word, actually, that has been, that phrase has been adjudicated multiple times in court cases here in Utah about how do you meet the reasonable specificity requirement? The reason why that is important is you are not allowed to take any formal action on something that is not on the agenda. So you can't put this nice broad vague stuff as your agenda item and then discuss anything you want, that is not reasonably specific. So make sure that, as you see the agenda, that as you're talking about things, it fits squarely within something that has been specified on the agenda, otherwise you cannot take action on it. You can also not begin the meeting before you have a quorum present. Well, you can begin the meeting without a quorum, you can't take any action until a quorum is present, including the approval of the minutes. That is it on that one. The next one, closed meetings. This is the fun part. So when can you close a meeting versus having to have things happen in the open? First, there's the process for how to close, and then we'll discuss what can happen in a closed meeting and what cannot happen in a closed meeting. So first, you have to start with an open meeting, even if the entire meeting is planned to be closed, you have to start open and then go through the procedure to close it. On this one, you need a quorum present, but you also need a two-third vote to close the meeting, so you have to have more than a simple majority of those present in order to close it. And what can you discuss in a closed meeting? What does it have to be in order for it to be closed? So you can close a meeting if all of those things happen, and you also have to record each vote, so your vote will have to be specified, that will go out actually on a public record. But you can close a meeting for the following purposes: the character, professional competence, or physical or mental health of an individual; strategy sessions to discuss collective bargaining; pending or reasonably imminent litigation; or the purchase, exchange, or lease of real property. You can close for a discussion regarding deployment of security personnel, devices, or systems, and some portions of the procurement process, you can close a meeting to discuss as well. We're doing okay so far? Okay? Next, we'll talk about the open meeting versus a public forum. This is actually a conversation that comes up a lot. What does it mean to have an open meeting in relation to interactions with the public when they attend? Legally speaking, the public is allowed to come and observe in an open meeting. An open meeting is not a public forum where the public has the right to provide discourse or get up and say whatever they want. The only right they have in this space is to observe. You have the ability to extend things beyond that, which you do when you offer your public comment, period, but you do not have to engage public as they're disrupting in the open meeting, and you can actually have disruptive members of the public removed without violating the Open and Public Meetings Act, because again, their only right for this specific purpose of an open meeting is to observe the meeting. The next is the keeping of a record. This is the part Lorraine does for you very well. You need to have written minutes, they do not have to be a direct transcription of every single word, which I'm sure Lorraine is very grateful for, that she does not have to write every word that you all say. If she did, I would really love to see her on the shorthand keyboard doing transcribing. They need to contain the date, the time, and the place, the matters, actions that were taken, and the vote, and discretionary to even include comments of the board members, which Lorraine does sometimes on her minutes if there's pertinent elements of the discussion. They can include individuals from the public recognized by the presiding officer and the substance of their comments, so you can move to have those added to the minutes if you would like. And the recording is permanent, just remember that. The minutes, however, are the official record of the board. The audio recording needs to be posted within three days of the meeting, and the minutes and drafts need to be posted in a reasonable time after they have been approved, but the drop dead deadline is three days after official approval of the minutes. And then, once they are done and posted, they are subject to the grandma laws, because they're now a public record. Why, oh, it's one of those slides, I actually had things that would appear as I hit the button, I apologize. So let's talk about violations. Why, the big reason why you don't want to violate the Open and Public Meetings Act, it would actually have the potential to void the actions you took. So the rules that you passed, the policies that you passed and voted on would suddenly be null and void, you would have to start over and do it again in an open public meeting. You want to make sure you don't put yourself through that process if you can avoid it. And now, the rest of the training is going to be going through some hypotheticals, and this is definitely the part where I would not recommend asking me in-depth questions, but to either write your question down for the AAGs, or I can write them down for you. But there are some things to think about through some of these hypotheticals and some court cases. court cases that have ruled in a certain way that you should keep in mind. Feel free, I just promise you, no solid answers from me.
If we're missing, if, well, certainly, this isn't a training, and you can, and he'll either say, "I'll answer your question," or not, but hopefully, it's not a test of his knowledge, but...
No.
So do you have a question, Board Member Lear, or do you have a comment or a question?
Well, I...
You want to turn your mic on?
I just wondered if we're supposed to talk or not.
Well, you, he made a request, but sometimes we don't follow those, but, but, but go ahead. You have, you have the mic.
I was more interested in what was prospective, but I did think it was maybe interesting to make a point about what you just said about items that don't, where you don't follow the Public and Open Meetings Act. I think sometimes people automatically think it's void, but it's not. It's just voidable.
Correct.
So it could be that some action is taken in violation of the Public Meetings Act that nobody has any problems about, and factor, the public is glad that it's been dealt with. So I just think that's an important distinction, but I'll listen, knowing that I don't have to be completely...
So, yes.
So while we, before he moves on and gets into the others, does anyone else have any other questions?
You guys are very kind to me. Thank you.
Please continue.
And just to add to Carol's point, the graphic, actually, on this slide is very relevant. A lawsuit would need to be filed, and the procedures with the court would have to go forward in order to void the action, but it is voidable at that point. So this is the, think about this. So you have ongoing discussions among members about the superintendent and the contract, and expressing your views about, it says his performance, but we will say her performance, absolutely. This can include one-on-one contacts, personal conversations with one another, telephone calls, all happening separately, multiple times. No poll is taken during this moment. You're not getting a sense of, like, does Sid keep her job, or does she not keep her job? None of that's being discussed. You're just discussing her performance. So if that happened, you have a series of unofficial communications. Have you violated the Open and Public Meetings Act? So the courts have said, "A series of unofficial closed meetings with less than a quorum." So you're doing one-on-one conversation. It wasn't eight of you having one conversation. But totaling a quorum, so you spoke to eight different people at different times, when taken together, can violate the spirit of the law.
Spirit?
Yes. So the courts have said, "You can violate the spirit of the law by having these one-on-one conversations regarding official business that you would conduct as board members." If it totals a quorum within all the conversations you have had, or that have been had. I will not elaborate much further in terms of, like, how does that look in terms of, if you're wanting to get a sense of, "I have a motion that I want to make, and I want to know how people are going to go on it," and you've asked more than eight, how they feel about it? There is a potential here that those total conversations could violate the Open and Public Meetings Act, because you're talking about official business with eight or more members of the board. A meeting may be conducted in person or through electronic communication, but the court said, technically, there is no quorum. However, they are not so naive, and I'm assuming this is verbiage from the ruling, as to be blind to the fact that those inclined to violate the Open and Public Meetings Act could do so using the quorum requirement as a shield. That's the court saying, like, don't get cute with this. Like, there are spirit of the law, and there are potentials to violate that spirit of the law, which could then bring into the ability to void some actions that were taken. So, next one to think about. So we are going to discuss, decide, or receive information as a group on issues related to the official business of the governing body at a social gathering. Carol is hosting a party, and you have all been invited.
Thank you.
I hope I would be invited too, Carol. So is this a violation of the Open and Public Meetings Act? If a quorum is present, you may not discuss official business at the setting, or in the setting. So the party at Carol's house is a social gathering, but you could violate the Open and Public Meetings Act if you sit and talk shop. There are a myriad of court cases about to what level talking shop is a violation versus not, but just keep in mind that if you are socially gathering, and there is eight or more of you present, you might want to be a little careful about what official business it is you are speaking about with one another in that setting. Please.
Definition of official business? Is there a definition in the court cases you read about official business, or could that same group talk about public education generally, but not an official vote that's upcoming, or a...
That is a great question. I have an answer, but I also preface all answers, I am not your attorney. I am not offering you official legal advice. So with that caveat, most of what is out there is official business is usually in the realm of things you can take action on. So these are things that you would be actually able to come to the board and vote on and make changes on. General operation of education and thoughts about, you know, how teacher training, style X versus Y is going, probably would not reach the level of something you could take action on, although I think reasonable minds could differ at some point. But everything that's in there, in the court cases that I've glanced at very briefly, point to things you can actually take official action on in a meeting.
Would be official business. Hey, thanks. That's helpful. Interesting.
So, next one. Letters, emails, text messages between fewer than a quorum, so less than eight of you, series of email exchanges between board members leading to vote to close an elementary school. Is this a violation of the Open and Public Meetings Act? So, according to the courts, serial meetings in groups of less than a quorum to avoid a public hearing or fashion an agreement may violate the law. This kind of goes back to the first one again. If you're starting to have enough conversations about formal business, especially something like closing an elementary school behind the scenes through texting, email, note, none of this actually even included in-person conversation. This is all electronic communication. It could violate the law, once again, especially if those communications total eight or more people. But even here, when they totaled less than eight people, it could possibly violate the Open and Public Meetings Act.
Thought.
What's that, Brittany Cummins? Vice Chair Brittany Cummins.
Oh, sorry. So, this one talks about emails between fewer than a quorum, and it relates to an actionable item. The last scenario was social gatherings and a full quorum. So if I was to blend the two, what about information given to the full board by email or text that may relate, that's informational to an agenda item, but there's no discussion? It's just informational?
That should be okay. So according to my notes here, who are kindly provided by Michelle Bueson, Brian Questonberry, group email that simply conveyed information such as an office memorandum rather than conversations attempting to reach an agreement are okay. So I think that's the crux. If you're trying to reach an agreement in the communication, trying to sway votes, in a sense, that's where we start to cross the line, but just conveying information is allowed.
Yeah, I did. I think this raises an interesting point, and maybe goes to what Brittany said also, that if it also has to be about official business, the board would have no authority to close some schools. I mean, the board might have authority to close some charter schools, but it wouldn't have any authority to close Eastwood Elementary. So any correspondence we would have about a horrible situation at a school that we have no authority to close could not be a violation of the law. Wouldn't that be true?
Correct.
And similarly, any conversation that the board would have about bills that we liked or didn't like, because we have no authority to vote on them or pass them, or have any meaningful action, would, seems to be okay. Now, we could get into the spirit of this law, which is taken lightly sometimes and not too, and more seriously, other times, but, but in terms of the actual words, wouldn't that be, wouldn't you think that's true? Again, not expecting you to give us legal advice.
Yes, in my humble, non-official attorney of you, although I am an attorney, but not yours, opinion, I would say.
Ethically, not mine.
Yes, yes. I would say that anything you don't have authority over, you don't have the ability to conduct official business on, which is really where the crux lies.
I'd never, I'd never really thought about that. Thank you.
Board Member Earl?
I think that answered my question, actually. I was just thinking, never mind. I think that answered my question, just what they said right there, having authority over.
Okay. Vice Chair Brittany Cummins?
So, gonna split this hair just one more piece. So even though we might not have authority over, we might have authority to take action on. So taking the bill example, while we don't have the authority to change a bill, we have the ability, and we take that opportunity to take action on a bill, to make a, to make a statement of support or otherwise. And so, would, because we have the ability to take action on a public statement of something, then would discussion on a piece of legislation then be something that we can only do in public?
I will say, that is a great question. I don't know that I have the answer, but you are correct. You do have the authority to vote on support or opposing legislation. So I would venture a guess, and I will get Michelle and Brian to send an email that clarifies whether or not I am in left field, but I would venture a guess that if you are out there, speaking amongst each other, trying to sway support or oppose votes over text or email, whatnot, regarding a bill, you could start rising to the level of, that is technically something you could conduct as official business. It does not qualify as something you can close a meeting for, so you could start walking a line, for sure.
So, one, one thing that might help our board members just a little bit is remind us who and what we are. We didn't cover that in the very beginning. On that, we did a little bit on what is a quorum and et cetera, but as a body, this is really important for us to know, is that we have zero authority by ourselves. But as soon as we come together, eight or more members, very simple, it's, whether we're emailing, texting, in a meeting, when that number is eight or more, then we become the State Board of Education. And so our communications and everything else, as soon as we're eight or more, we're basically acting as a body. Now, we can try to split hairs and that, but I think where you're going on this is, we need to be very careful. If we have something interesting, or some, some information we want to share to the board as a member, you bet, send it out. When we get in trouble, or when we can find ourselves in trouble, especially if it's leading up to something that's coming up on an action item, is when we weigh in and we start commenting and communicating and positioning back and forth over something. That happens on our texts, it can be on our emails, it's grammarable, and so that's where all the caution goes. So we, as board members, if we're going through this, as soon as we find ourselves in an eight or more, in a position of eight or more, we need to have a little bit of caution. And I think that's what, when we get to the spirit of the law, I think that's what's being implied there, is that, that caution? That doesn't mean we can't communicate and put information out there. I think Board Member Lear's going to challenge me on this.
I'm not, 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 not straight up.
Okay.
I'm just going to say, I, I think that, that it also says in the opening introduction that Jeff read about advisory groups, and advisory groups frequently don't have full, an eight-member board, but if we're talking about the spirit of this, and integrity is certainly the word of the day in the last few days, if we're having integrity about this, we can't, I think we shouldn't get right up to the line on some issues and, and say, "Well, that really isn't, isn't official action." And in other cases, we, we say, "Well, you know, we're going to be really careful if there are eight of us," and discussing things that we might speculatively take, make recommendations about. So, I mean, my feeling about the Open Meetings Act, and I've said it pretty strongly many times, is that it's a sunshine law. It's that the best work the public does is, is in public, and I, I feel really strongly that, that it, I would not be in a group that there's less than eight that corresponds when we could, that corresponds and discusses issues on which we'll take action. So that's my level of sensitivity about it. I'm just saying, I think we should be consistent in terms of our spirit of law interpretation.
And, and we're, we're boards, or a lot of boards are getting in trouble. There's not, our board is, is in the communications using the emails and the texts, and so that's why, that's why I wanted to bring that back up again on that, is, is, a lot of times, why, a portion, a good portion of communications that would come to this board is, are FYIs, for your information. But as soon as this starts going into a dialogue of eight or more, that's, that's when people find themselves in trouble. So it's, that's where I'm coming up with the, the big eight, on emails and texts and, and all of that dialogue. Because if you don't participate in it, and you're, and you're eight or more, that's a significant violation. Board Member Cindy Davis?
Just a question. I think I've hit, done a reply all, or sent an email out to the whole board, like, three times at the most in a year, and they haven't been encouraging or asking about votes or anything like that. But if I'm going to bring a motion to the table, I will often reach out to a few people and say, "What do you think?" And if they're like, "I don't want to waste everybody's time." So is that appropriate? Or do I not, do you put any feelers out ahead of time? I, I've never crossed an eight-person line, but like, the other day, I was considering something in committee, and I said to Carol, "What do you think about this?" And she said, and I'm like, "I'm not going to waste my time. If the chair of our committee hates it, I'm not going to, I'm going to spend my time doing other things." So I guess it's my, my question, is that appropriate to, in the effort of not spinning everybody's wheels here? If you get a feel for a few people, they don't like it, then not bringing something forward? Is that appropriate?
Sure. Again, as you're, the world, according to Jeff Van Holton, the citizen and employee of USB, I would draw your attention to the screen again, in the yellow box where it says, this is the example of if you have communications with less than a quorum, but the key phrase is the first two words. If you're having serial meetings, and the whole idea is so that you can circumvent having to discuss something in an open and public meeting, even though you feel like you probably should, that is where I think you start to cross that line. When you really look at the spirit of the law and why it exists, to make sure that public business is happening in front of the public, that the public has the ability to observe. So getting a pulse on something, I think asking a couple of people is fine, especially if it, it results in, like, I'm just going to let it lie. But I think you start to really cross that line when you start to use, as they say, the quorum requirement as a shield, or if you try and use this other idea of, like, "I only talk to one person each at a time, so technically, I didn't conduct business, but I've committed, you know, my nine people to vote on this." That's when you start to look into places where the court is going to call out the fact that, as they said in their ruling, they're not naive to the fact that people try and use technicalities in this law to circumvent it. So I think that's what I would use as your, kind of your, your compass in deciding whether or not you're crossing a line or not, is make sure that you're not starting to really skirt the line, because what you don't want to do is say something in a public meeting, and so now I'm going to just talk to everyone behind the scenes, so that I can make sure I don't have to do this in front of the public. We have our final slide. Kind of just a perfect segue to the end of this. Board Member Davis? These are the things you should ask yourself when communicating with each other as members of the board. And it looks like we will need to get through this slide quickly, as my battery is dying. Are we communicating official business? Will we be taking a vote on this matter? How many board members are involved in the communication? Is it a quorum? Is this a series of communications through electronic means that totals a quorum? Is there any evidence of trying to circum- Is there any evidence of trying to circumvent the spirit of the law? Are my emails or text messages public records, subject to discovery under grandma? Remember, if you're receiving a stipend for your cellphone, so the taxpayer dollars are paying for some of it, it is subject to grandma, and you could have your text messages grandmaed, in terms of, I wanna see every text about the closure of this school, or every text about the pulling of the funding of X. So, keep in mind, all of your communications can be made public record, even if it's not necessarily done in a direct, open and public meeting. So, being on the safe side, it is most likely a meeting, and it violates, if, and it violates the law if, you have a majority of the board members present in a conference call, great example. You have serial meetings, each consisting of less than a quorum, to discuss usually something that would be official business. A majority of the board members using email or text messages to discuss, express approval or express disapproval of a matter that is before the board, or is likely to come before the board. So, that's the quorum piece. So, to be on the safe side, treat electronic communications involving back and forth exchanges of viewpoints the same as a conference call. Avoid the use of reply all, copy and forward to all board members, unless absolutely necessary. And emails from the board leadership to all members that do not require a response is fine. That information sharing piece, again, especially from board leadership, is not, not gonna trigger the law. You've all been very kind to me. Thank you for letting me step in last minute, so our AAGs could handle some personal issues. And if you have more questions, I would encourage you email Michelle and Brian, because they are very excited to make sure this went well, and that you are getting every piece of information you need. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff, for doing this on short notice, and, and we'll, we'll then toward these questions, and we'll certainly move those forward. Thank you. Okay, we have a time certain at 11:00. We have an Anthos Academy School Turnaround Report. I believe they're here, so, might as well have you, might as well have you come up, and we'll make sure things get plugged in on. Brian, Brian, are you taking point on this? Brian, Brian is the director. As we're getting set up, if you'd, we just turn all those, whatever mics that are close, we'll try to get them. They have got two of them on, we'll have these other two going, the southern coming up here in a minute.
Thank you so much for having us join you today. We are so excited to share our story of turnaround success. My name is Esther Thompson Blackwell. I'm the executive director, the new executive director for Anthos Academies. And today, we're gonna be sharing our story, and we have four of us that I would like to make sure you're introduced to. So, again, I'm the executive director, Esther Thompson Blackwell. We have Jaren Gibson, who is our board chair for Anthos Academies. We have Brian Storz, who is gonna be leading our presentation here, and he's the principal or the school director for Anthos Magna. And we have Matt Edvick, who is our director of curriculum and instruction. So, we're kind of dividing out our presentation today, and we're gonna go ahead and get started.
All right. And we appreciate the opportunity to be here. We wanna just first, in this presentation, just kind of walk through where we've been the past five years. As you know, in the 2014-2015 results of our testing, that placed us in this new program called Turnaround. There were a lot of questions, some anxiety over that, but we found resources that were suddenly available to us, that helped, helped us move forward and helped us begin to make progress through this, this situation. Ed Direction was the resource that we chose to work with, and we felt like we did so very successfully over the next three years. They helped us put in place some long-term structures that we feel gave us ongoing benefits, and helped us increase our school performance. We found that we were unable to exit the turnaround program, reach those thresholds within the allotted time, but we were granted an extension, which we were grateful for. And over the next couple of years, with additional support from this board, from the State Charter Board, we were able to make the necessary course corrections and finalize and cement the things that we had been working on the prior years, to where we were able to really see some great results last year. Our December scores were such that we were able to receive a visit, a very welcome visit, from Superintendent Sidney Dixon, who came to our Magna campus in December and made the, brought the glad tidings, right before the winter break, that we were out of turnaround. So, that, that is where we've been as a school. We'd like to spend the rest of this presentation speaking to some of the particulars with that.
Okay, I'll share yours. Okay, and I just wanted to say, it's, it's really nice to be here, under some different circumstances, and it's, get to share some of the things we've done, and we have greatly appreciated the support we've gotten from, from everybody. So, in, in this process last year, one thing we wanted to do was really make sure we were addressing the needs of our community. One of the things that became, that was very apparent, is that we have a very high Spanish-speaking population. We have about 45% of our students are Latino, about 22% of them are English-language learners. And so, we, we made a few changes in staffing. One thing we did was made sure we had a Spanish speaker in our front office. When I was hired as the assistant director, I am a Spanish speaker, and I was spending a lot of my time translating IEPs and, and just helping people with general things. What I saw was that, as the parents came in, sometimes fumbling through a second language when they found out that I spoke Spanish, everything changed, and then they started coming a lot more often. And so, we needed to make sure we had somebody in the front office that would be the first one they saw when they walked through the door, that could help them. And we've, and we've hired Ms. Emily here, who's been fantastic about building those relationships, and making our, our Spanish-speaking population feel comfortable participating in, in school. And so, we've also made that a priority with other staffing decisions, making that Spanish-speaking ability a top priority. And we've hired more people in our ESL, or it's our EL program, that, and they've been able to help at all of our family events. We've done a lot of family nights with literacy and math and other things, where we have Spanish speakers there, and we've seen more of a turnout of that, that demographic of our, of our population. We also have, 57% of our students come from economically disadvantaged households, and so we've done more to try to meet their more basic needs. We provide a free breakfast for everyone in the school. We've, we've brought in more activities after school and targeted tutoring that are, that are free to our students. We've, we've tried to reach out to our community and provide more of those, those family events, where they get to come into the school and, and meet with our teachers, and get more resources that they can help our students. And for us, this is, this has had a tremendous impact on just our, our main goal of increasing our academic results, just building and harnessing the, the power of our community, and really gaining allies in that effort. So, that has, and that's a work that we're continuing to do, but we've, we've made some great steps in that way.
Okay, and I, some of the questions that we get asked now that people know that we've exited turnaround is, how did you do it, and what made the biggest differences? And so, that's what I get to share. And in the beginning, in our first root cause analysis, as Ed Direction was interviewing our teachers and talking to our teachers, one of the things that, that came through was that our expectations that teachers find expeditions within our community, that they were riding curriculum around, so that, so that everything was tied within the community, was exceptionally challenging for new teachers. And we had hired a lot of new teachers, and we were having a lot of turnover, and basically, the feedback was that we were burning teachers out, expecting them to learn how to teach and to write high-quality curriculum. And so, we went on a discovery of what high quali, high-quality curriculums were out there. And for Language Arts, we landed on the EL education modules, which, which was good for us, because we're affiliated with EL education, we're in EL education school, and these modules were written at a very rigorous level for the state of New York. And, and so, we adopted those and, and trained our teachers in how to teach these modules that focus on academic discussion and focus on, rigorously focus on the standards. And through that process, we also found that the Ready Math curriculum was far superior to the curriculum that we had been using. And again, it focuses on academic discussion, and kids being able to explain their thinking around how they're answering questions, and how they're thinking through problems and modeling. And so, those are the two curriculums that we selected throughout this process, that we feel have made a, a big difference. So, teaching standards at a high level is one thing, assessing standards at a high level is another challenge. And as we went through the process, and not seeing our scores grow like we had hoped throughout the turnaround process, we started to ask the question is, are, are the assessments that our teacher's giving students at a rigorous enough level, that, that we know that they're learning the standards at a high level? And so, we were searching for an assessment platform that, that would allow us to, to really have confidence in the assessments that we were giving students. And so, we landed on iReady, and we adopted iReady last year, and so that was our first year. And the benefit there was that we had benchmark assessments that we knew, that were really rigorous, that we could get data easily. Teachers weren't spending hours and hours creating these long benchmark assessments, and it was instantaneous results, and that the students could see where their scores were, and, and how they were growing or not growing throughout the year. And we feel like that, that piece of rigorous assessments, and students being able to see their growth and track their growth, and talk to their parents about their growth or not growth, really helped our students be more invested in their progress. And, and, and we saw a lot of growth on the iReady diagnostic, and we feel like that translated over into the RISE assessment as well. And then, our response to intervention is, the, I guess, what I would say is, Jaren had mentioned, mentioned developing some key structures that provided a foundation for academic excellence, and even though we weren't seeing the growth in the test scores in those first few years, one of the structures that has become part of our school is our data inquiry team, where team-level teachers, once a week, for 90 minutes, are able to talk about the data that they're seeing in their classrooms and in their assessments, and be able to target instruction and intervention based on that data. And we, through the, the State Charter Board, in being on warning status, received a mentor with Stacy Phillips and Karen Pfeifer from Voyage Academy, and they came in and really helped us fine-tune that process that we were using, and, and how we were identifying the needs of the student and reacting to those needs. And so, their expertise combined with that we had this structure in place that was already what we were doing, really has helped us to be able to, to be really more specific about our targeted instruction and the, the interventions that students are receiving.
So, we'll just take a moment and review with you the path of the results over that course of time, starting with the Language Arts scores, both proficiency there on the right, and then the median growth percentile. Let you look at those. And then, next with science.
Do you have a thought? So, you're going way up in 16, and then you have a little dip in 17, and then you start to really take off. Do you have a thought for what caused the little dip there?
I, so, I was the director of the school during those years, and we, when we implemented the modules, the EL education modules, we had a, a significant growth that first year, and we were really excited about it. And then we saw the dip, and we were puzzled about why that would have happened. And I don't have a, I don't, I don't have a great answer there, other than that, I wanna think through this before I say it, but that, there was a lot of, there's been urgency through the whole process. Like, this has been an incredibly stressful series of years for our school. But there was a lot of energy and excitement around that new, that new program, and, and it could be that we saw some gains, and then, I don't wanna say, let off the gas a little bit, because we were still pushing, and we were still teaching and stuff like that, but kids did not grow and, and progress like they did the previous year. Thank you.
I wanted to speak to that really quickly, and obviously, I just, I have more of an anecdotal, you know, answer to that question, but I think there's, in, in those years, there was a lot of change, lots of things that we were trying to do differently. And I think the efficiency of a lot of those things, all kind of coming together at once, struggles until we have a chance to give it some, some time. And so, you'll see in the graphs that the, this last year is where we had the most growth, and we as a, as a staff have, have been in complete consensus that it's been based on the changes we've made for years prior to that, and that it kind of all, all came together this last year.
Thank you for that question. Any other questions or observations on the Language Arts results?
Please continue, I'm not seeing any questions.
Great, okay. And then we had the science results following that. You can see a slightly different path on those. And then finally, the results from math. See the biggest differences made just in this past year there, proficiency in math. So, obviously, very thrilled with where we have ended up. One question the board asks right away, as we see these numbers, after we celebrate, of course, is what, what are we doing to prevent any kind of backslide, or, or letting off, or anything that would potentially put us back in a concerning spot? So, we wanna speak to that a little bit with, with some of the things we're seeing. Excuse me, I kind of overstepped a slide here, but this is our overall scores here. You see, of course, the 231 threshold, and where we were compared to that over the years.
All right, so, like Jaren had mentioned, we've seen this phenomenal growth in the past year and it's extremely exciting. We're very happy with it and we're really determined not to backslide at this point and to maintain the, the trajectory that we have. So, over the, the summer and the past few months, we have worked very closely with both our USBE turnaround mentors and our charter board mentors, as well as our, our advocates and mentors from EL education. And we have brought them together and really formed this amazing team to advocate and to make sure that we stay successful. So, we met together and we formed a very, what I felt was a very strong progress monitoring plan and we based it around a structure that Ed Direction had presented us with. And we came up with three evidence-based priority practices. And I, at this point, I would just like to recognize, I know you guys are busy, but Dr. Max Lang, Leslie Evans, Dr. Christelle Estrada, Stacy Phillips, Janie Stoddard, Michael Clark, Brett Campbell, Karen Pfeifer, and Jennifer Lambert, who have, I know that no one wants to see schools closed down, everyone wants to see schools be successful. And all of these people really rallied around and worked together to help us turn this corner and they have been phenomenal, so I just want to say thank you to all of them. And then, we wanted to share a little bit with you so we can provide some reassurance that we're in a strong place and we're going to keep moving forward. So, we're going to share a little bit about our progress monitoring plan. So, our first priority practice, these are really based around John Hattie's work and we chose some of the practices that Matt and Brian had been working on over the past few years and had really leveraged for success and we honed in on them in this plan. So, our priority practice, number one, was really looking at classroom discussion and that has an effect size of .82. And Dr. Christelle Estrada was especially helpful to really give our teachers some training on implementing this in our classrooms. It's helpful to all children, but especially powerful for English language learners. Okay. Priority practice two that we've been focusing on over the past few months is self-reported grades and that has an effect size of 1.33, so it's a very powerful practice. And that's really been made easy for us with the data from iReady and our data inquiry teams because we've been able to have strong and accurate data through the iReady adaptive testing system. And they have lots of tools that we can use to sit down and have data discussions with students and with parents and have students set their own goals and work towards them. So, that's been really, really great for us. And priority practice three is our RTI system. And this work was really started with Matt and Brian and Stacy Phillips and Janie Stoddard, working with our data inquiry teams to make sure that we had a really effective tiered intervention system. So, now, our teachers look at their student data every single week and gear small group targeted or individual support to students based on how they are performing and where we can see their strengths and weaknesses lie and that has an effect size of 1.29. So, this is our mid-year data and obviously, we don't have mid-year RISE data and this isn't RISE data, but we do know that iReady is generally correlated to RISE. So, it's the tool that we have to kind of gauge how we're doing. And within half a year, we are seeing really exciting continued growth. You can see our math placement at the beginning of the year, we had 13% of our students testing proficient on the iReady data and we're now at 27%. So, we're really moving in the right direction and we do believe we'll see correlation in the RISE results. And then, this is the reading data and at the beginning of the year, we had 20% of our students testing proficient in reading and we are now at 36%. So, again, this is not the RISE data, but we do feel like it, I mean, there's studies that show that it is correlated and it was correlated for us last year. So, we use this data that we gather to inform instruction through data inquiry teams that our teachers participate in on a weekly basis. So, we're feeling confident about this. And then, again, we are just so glad to be in front of you with good news and to celebrate the success of Magna, NTO's Magna. And I know you guys are too, because I know you don't want to be in the, put in the horrible position of having to make a decision for a community that's, that's going to be hard and painful. So, we're just super thrilled and if you have any questions for us, please go ahead.
Mike, down here. Board members, do you have any questions? So, trying to get this to come back up. This is a different computer we have on here. I can't, I can't turn on the, he's coming up, he'll get it up and going. While, while he's getting this up, I'll just throw my comments out there. I'll take a chair's privilege here. Well, I'm, I'm excited that you're here today and these are good numbers and, and with all of the challenges that you have, you know, with the ELL and, and the things that we don't talk about is the turn, the teacher turnover and then also, what's happening with students, how they stay in the program and how that's kind of a little bit of a revolving door. But I, I'm excited that you've, you've highlighted a couple of things and this is on the student side, that the students and parents, but more so the students, are participating in the academic con, you know, one-on-one academic conversation and talk times. It's kind of a new trend and whenever I see that out in public education, there's fantastic results. A lot of these students don't want to be compared to some state average or something, but when they have their own individual goals and they work on the self-mastery, it's like a victory every day, a victory every conversation and, and it really excites, excites that students. I get to do a little of it in my part-time as a, as a reading coach in an elementary school and they just, they light up when they set their goal, they're prepared for it, they, they nail it. I, I use the term, they, they're reading off the chart because I like to have my charts so they can color in and see the whole graph instead of this great chart and they're only getting like 10% of it. They never see the progress and so, anytime they can move off of it. So, I, I, I'm glad to see that you put that in the forefront of where you're, where you're going. So, thank you for your work there. We have some board member questions or comments. We'll start with board member Davis.
Just wanted to thank you for your work that you're doing with students and can you remind me what your student body number is, your population in the school?
We're about 480 total students.
Okay, okay, thank you. And, and just the, the last comment is, I just noticed how you had mentors or coaches or what have you support from the state charter school board and the Utah State School Board, both members of staff. And, just, that has been kind of a topic of conversation recently and wanted to note that cooperation and collaboration there and how that can happen.
Board member Scott Nielsen?
Yeah, thank you. Really quickly, I just have a couple of questions and really fantastic, I'll, I'll share something else right after this, but what, so you weren't using RISE, what else, what metrics were you using to determine your upward trend? Basically, what sort, what sort of testing or what sort of service or something like that?
So, it's been iReady that we started last, at the beginning of last year.
Okay.
And that's given us a lot of data and those metrics to show growth. Before that, it had been the RISE benchmarks.
RISE benchmarks.
And our own assessments.
Our own assessments, the, the DIBELS.
Okay.
For tracking those.
That's great.
We looked at all those numbers and...
Okay, so now, no, no, I love it, I love it. This is, this is really great. A short story, because when I see, some people might see numbers of like, oh, only 36%, but I'll share this with you really quick. I have a really, I have a, I've been in military for a little while, but one of my associates is a Green Beret and we're pretty much on par with each other, except he's a Green Beret and I'm not. And I asked him one day, because the training is so rigorous, I asked him one day, I said, "How is it that you, that you made it through?" Because at one, once upon a time in my youth, I considered something like that, that's long gone, but anyway. He says, "Well, I was only focused, I focused on," he says, "because there's so," he's like, "I got there and there was people that were bigger, faster and stronger than me." And he says, "In fact, I felt that way," this is him speaking to me, "about all the people that were there." And I said, "Well, you were one of the few that made it through, this, just this rigorous training." I said, "How'd you do it?" He says, "Because I focused on the next three hours or the next," can I get to the end of the day? Can I get to tonight? Can I, I'm going to do that. I, I, okay, I might, I don't know if I can, but I'm going to, I'm going to make it through that and I'm going to, then, I'm going to make it to 3:00 PM, I'm going to make it through this training." He says, and so, through those small increments, he, he says, "Oh, everybody looked at it like, well, we need to be at 80%." He's like, "Most of them fell out." He says, "But I stuck to, I want to say, line upon line, can I make it to this next few hours, can I make it the next day?" And he did. And I think that, that's really marvelous where I see this, where you have gotten to, you know, to, from a low point to a, a much, much better point. And if that trend continues, I really foresee great successes in your school. So, I'm, I'm, and I hope you do too. I hope that you're, that you're not satisfied with where you're at because you're still, you know, you're still going to try to make it through the night, as it were. So, but I appreciate that and I, I see a, a great upward trend. So, thank you for coming and sharing this. This is, this is great news. When I look and see these people here, they, they look happy and happy teachers make happy kids. I, I just, I love that, so thank you.
Board, board member Janet Cannon?
I have two questions for you. The first one is about being a turnaround school. So, we were discussing turnaround yesterday and we discussed asking for a legislative change, making the amount of turnaround time given to schools for their support for four years instead of three with a possible two-year extension. And I would just, apparently, research shows that schools need five to six years to successfully turn around. So, I would like to just get your opinion on the timeframe that Utah is looking at giving turnaround, what you experienced and what your recommendation to us would be. Then I have, it's a follow-up question.
I, the, as I've thought about turnaround and, and my first response is, is that it's working. Like, you look at the number of schools who exited turnaround last year and, and, and then us and, and I haven't heard anything official about Midvale, but I'm assuming that, that they also...
Midvale's doing good.
That they are doing good. And, and so, it took us a, a year longer to, to get there, but we did. And so, I think that, that if you go by numbers, most of the schools were able to do it in, in three years. And I've thought and thought and thought about what, what was different about us, what, what made it take four years? And, and I don't know what that answer is. I'm wondering if, I'm wondering if some of those schools had started some of the, the practices that we implemented earlier than us in that trajectory with, with different support, but I, but I don't know. And so, the three years definitely created urgency and, and I've had people talking to other instructional coaches say, "I wish our school would get put in turnaround because then people would listen," like, they would listen to us because we really did have that urgency that turnaround created and, and that timeline that created that urgency. We have a great culture at our school and it's partially because we all bought in. Everybody bought into the plan, everybody implemented the plan and, and so, I don't know what a fourth year would, would do if, if I was, if we were talking about this last year at this time, I would say four years for sure, for sure, four years. But, but I also agree that, that the research shows that it takes time to, to turn a school around and sustain it, right? Because there's...
That's what we want, we don't want the, because some of the three years get out of turnaround and then they immediately fall back.
Right, and there's some volatility, volatility there. And that's part of, as I was thinking to your previous question, like, there's volatility in test scores from year to year. And so, it may, you know, that, that longer timeline may allow schools to, to put practices in place that can be long-term practices and, and fundamental structures of the school that can help them sustain that, that positive trajectory and, and better academic performance.
Thank you. I had one other question. So, part of our strategic plan is to personalize education for students. And I noticed here that on your iReady slide, you talk about, "We learned how to use the data in data inquiry teams to plan differentiated instruction based on the needs of each child." And I, I think that's wonderful and I wonder if you could maybe comment on what that was like? How, was it so difficult, almost impossible to do or was it something that was so rewarding that you bought into it and want to do it? Or how did it work for you, differentiating instruction for each child?
That's a really good question. So, the iReady platform has a component of that built into it where they, they have some online lessons that will be exactly at their level. So, that's, that's part of our intervention process. In the very beginning, we talked about small group instruction and, and doing small groups and we had quite a few teacher that it was their very first year teaching and, and I just, hats off to all of those teachers who started with us and have stuck through the process because we have asked them to do a lot of learning and implement a lot of things. And by being able to keep our teachers, we've been able to build on their skills. And so, it took us some time to be able to, to say, "Okay, now, when we do small group, now we can do small group instruction and we can recognize what each level of student needs." And then, our, our mentors from Voyage Academy also came in and, and our board allocated extra money for us last year to be able to purchase intervention programs if we needed them. And, and so, we've got a lot of resources and part of the process has been teaching teachers to recognize, "Okay, these students need this specific intervention and, and we're going to do that." And, and these students need this specific intervention and scheduling and timing and it's, it's very, it's, it is very rewarding, to answer your question, to see kids be excited to, to go out to their groups and, and, and work with the paraprofessionals and the teachers on those specific skills that they need. And, and to be able to, we've got a spreadsheet that shows the specific skills and it just goes from red to green. And as we're going through the year and they're learning those skills going red to green, it's, it's really gratifying.
And I wanted to add just that, you know, iReady has given us a lot of the data that we use for those interventions and a lot of the resources as well, but we've, we've had to restructure our, our schedule to build in the time for it. And we've had to reallocate the resources, especially with our paraprofessionals, that this is what they do, that they're working just on these small group interventions, a lot of individuals. And so, that has, that has been a big change in our school, that paraprofessionals are not helping out in classrooms. They are teaching targeted lessons to individual students and they're, they're moving kids along on, on that continuum. And so, that's, we've had to build in time and resources to, to support it. And so, now, it's, it's been rolling and seeing the success is exciting. And so, the kids are excited about it, all of our staff, you know, is really excited to see kids moving.
Well, I congratulate you on your success and I'm especially thrilled for your students to be learning and succeeding. That's just good news for all of us.
Thank you. Hey, board members, we have about 10 more minutes before another meeting. We have three other questions or comments. Superintendent Dixon?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just so proud of you all, but I, I want to highlight something that you haven't mentioned and it's because it's about you all. One of the board's priorities, both at, at the... One of the board's priorities, both at, at the legislature and in our strategic plan, is building leadership. So, I just want to give a shout-out to this team. I think one of the, the keys to, to all of this success was your being so open to be coached and to receive support on how, how do we lean into this in a way that gets to the success of every student? This morning, we were with legislators early, and one had a group of principals together who, who shared this quote with her, and I loved it. It was, "Working conditions are learning conditions." So, the working conditions that you've established for your teachers comes from the leadership development that you've had from the coaches and the support that you talked about. So, I, I want to highlight that for the board, because I'm so proud that the board is leaning in on leadership, and you can see, this is a great example of leaders being open to understanding the cycle of continuous improvement, and then to get the kind of support they need to make that sustainable. So, I, you would never highlight yourselves, but in order for this to happen, it, it takes directors and board members and leaders at the school level all working together, and one of the most joyous days of my year was to be able to come and punk you with some donuts, because I got to see grown men cry, tears of joy, and it was, it was an awesome day to celebrate that hard work with you, so thank you, but, but just understand that you have, you, I want the board to know how leadership plays into that, and, and you were all so open and so willing to receive that coaching and grow your skillset, and that, that was a huge factor.
Board member Cindy Davis?
I want to piggyback on what our superintendent just said, and I hope you'll take this as a compliment in all good ways. I feel like I'm listening to different people this year than I was listening to a year ago. I don't know if anyone else senses the same. So, to piggyback on what board member Cannon said also, we're, we're trying to, to figure out what the exit criteria for turnaround should be. Should it be, if, if you're surpassed the 3%, should remove that to 10 to 15%? What are your thoughts about the exit criteria?
I honestly haven't thought about it, because I've been so focused on the 14, 15 exit criteria. But, but we've really dug into the, the new accountability model also, and, and feel like we understand that, and I, I would have to think about, I'm sure I have an opinion on it, but I'd have to think about it and, and get back to you on that.
Will you share it when, when you get it? And I'm not going to say any pros or cons, because I don't want to lead, but, but I think all of us really are interested in, in feedback.
Yeah.
And I don't have a, you know, I don't have a number, but I felt like there's a lot of, there's a lot of factors that go into that type of improvement, and, and last year, I think we were all knocked a little off balance, because, you know, the metrics that were being used, we didn't meet, we didn't meet the mark, and we felt like there's so many other things that we were doing right and we were proud of. And, you know, through the turnaround process, which I know is relatively new for Utah, that I've used the analogy with, with staff and other people of, you know, the, the first step is stopping going in the wrong direction, and then it's about pointing in the right direction and then moving in the right direction, and, and some of that takes time to where after a few years, you may have not seen a lot of growth, but there's been a lot of changes. And so I, I, I think it's, it's individual, I think there's a lot, you know, it's a more quantitative type of, of, of metric that could be used to see, is this school implementing the things that we've asked? Are, are they moving in the right direction? And some schools may take off, and others, depending on the myriad factors, take, take more time. So, I, I don't have a great answer, but I think the fact that you're having that conversation is, is really, really good.
Board member Davis, just, so you know, we just, as you were asking that question, Dr. Dixon and I were, just had a very quiet whisper of, we need to reach out to those schools that are, that have been experiencing turnaround. She's going to take point and, and ask, ask some questions and bring that back to the board. Good question. Board member Scott Hanson?
Just quickly, kudos to the whole team. Really appreciate seeing you under these circumstances. Lot more smiles on faces, I think, than the last time that, that we saw you, and, and thank you for sticking with it through the whole process, because I know that it is a difficult process, takes a lot of perseverance. My question is, how did you keep your staff engaged through this whole four-year process? It seems like you had pretty good retention, at least from what I heard. I'd like to hear your thoughts on that and how you were able to do that.
Well, I can, I can speak a little bit to that, and then you can add whatever you think. We, turnaround for us has, has been a really unifying process, that we have great people, and they've been on board, and, you know, we've, we've tried to build a culture of, that we are in this together, and, and part of our, our school charter that we're an EL school is that we are a crew, and that we, we do this together. And, you know, as we've tried to make sure we, we keep the teachers we have, it's, it's been understandable, it's extremely stressful working under those conditions, and we've asked a lot of teachers, and so I, you know, we've, we've lost only a few along the way, and, and it's been remarkable to see how many teachers just said, "I'm, I'm in it to the end, I'm going to see it through, whatever happens." Even when it was the threat of the school possibly shutting down, you know, I had those, those anxieties of teachers just fleeing the school, and they didn't. And it was, and, and several teachers made the point of coming to me and, and other people to say, "I'm not leaving." And we just, we have remarkable people at our school, and we've tried to build that culture and that shared leadership where people are invested. And I, I don't, you know, I, I don't have a super-specific answer for that, other than it's, it's, it's gone that way. Do you have any thoughts for that?
Yeah, I think probably that, the answer to that question is different for every single teacher, right? But, but from the very beginning, we focused on culture and, and teacher culture, and making sure that our teachers knew that they were valued and, and listened to, and we, in our planning process, we take an annual inventory of how, how well are we implementing the core practices of the, of the EL model? And we take the teacher feedback, and as a leadership team, we look at that and say, "Okay, this is what the teachers said are, are weakest areas, so our next work plan is going to develop around those areas, we're going to get it to them as soon as possible so that as they're planning, they can have those things in mind." And, and then the, the structure of crew that we use with our students, we also use that with our teachers. So, we have a, a teacher circle up every morning, where we come and we greet each other, we play little short initiative games with each other, we highlight students together, but every morning, we're seeing each other's faces and, and talking about what's going well in the school. And then we've done some specific book studies and focuses on specific books that, that, that talk about culture and how to, how to build and maintain culture in a school, and, and so I think all of those things have built a culture where teachers want to be there, even though it's really hard, even though it's really stressful, and, and we've got people who like kids too, and so that's really, like, that's the most important, is that our teachers, they like kids, so.
Thank you. I hope that we can learn from you, and we can duplicate that kind of environment in these turnaround situations in other places. And thanks again on behalf of the kids, I think they're the real winners in all of this, so thanks.
Thank you. This will be our last question here. Board member Lear, or comment?
Yeah, thank you, thank you for being here, and I have a, I have a, actually two not pretty direct questions, though. And, and let me admit it biased. I, in listening to these turnaround discussions and discussions from charter schools over years, I'm a career educator, and I always, I always go, yet, I always think about how much my training matters and how much it matters in all my decision-making, and yet I'm hearing more and more from charter schools that have a more mixed range of training, and I was just, and you folks seem to really grasp the essence of learning and teaching as I understand it. So, I'm just curious of the four of you, what is your, can you just give me in each in 20 words or less, your background in education, if there is any, or, or whatever else, what other, what else, what other background you might have?
Sure. Esther?
Yes, I've been in education in Utah, actually, over 20 years in a variety of settings, and I have my master's in educational leadership and have been in educational leadership for about eight years now as an administrator in several different schools, and so it is my career and my passion. I've taught everything from kindergarten through 12th grade in some capacity or another, so I was a teacher prior to being an administrator, and place great value on educating our educators. And so, yes, if our educators come to us from a non-traditional background, we're going to get them up to speed quickly.
So, you have an educator license?
Yes. Yeah.
And as a board member, my experience in education is my own personal experience, no formal work in the field, but worked through college, graduated from Weber State, not in education, but in communication, and joined the board about 15 years ago, and I have enjoyed the process of learning what it takes to, to be successful in this environment, so.
Impressing to have a, impressive to have a long-term board member, those are rare.
So, I, I received my teaching license there at BYU, and I taught for 10 years in Texas and Oregon mostly, and I taught social studies, I taught Spanish, I taught social studies in Spanish in a dual-language program. I received a master's degree in education, and then taught for a few more years, and then I went to USU and, and did my administrative credential on top of my master's degree, and then I, I started working here. So, this is my first job in, in education, in administration, was when I was the assistant principal four years ago.
Thank you.
So, my education is in social work, and I wanted to be a therapist for teenagers and was teaching math at a, as a, as a paraprofessional, basically at a private school, a ther, a residential treatment center, and just thought, "You know what? The therapists only see the kids for an hour individual therapy, an hour of group therapy, and I'm with the kids all the time. I think I can have a bit better impact if I stay in the classroom." So, I applied for and received a district-specific license to teach math, and so that's what I've been teaching under and have just passionately learned about the craft of teaching, and, and, and so, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for being willing to share that, because it's really, it's very informative for me. Thank you.
Well, thank you for being here today, but before we go, who, who in our audience here has their fingerprints on this, this school? I know there's a few of them. Can I have you all stand up that's been working here with this school? I think there's more than that, I just keep standing. And, hey, thank you. Thank you for a report.
Thank you so much.
Okay, this, this concludes this portion of our board meeting. We're going to be setting up real quick for our Utah Schools for the Deaf and Blind Board Meeting that started two minutes ago, so please rally back in here. Thank you.